We would like to call the work session to order. And I think it has been requested that Dennis Norton go first. And Mike's not here yet, but we don't need... You wanted to go first, correct, Dennis?
Uh, yeah, Mike here.
He's not here, but...
I'm my own.
Well, then... Well, we can wait a few more minutes in before we do that and just start going through the... although you're the first on the agenda, the budget amendments. I know Carl Rousey is also here for something that's on the agenda. So for the...
Budget amendment?
But I'll just...I'll just review. On the budget amendments, there's five streetlights along the walkpath of Nancy Park that are proposed for $11,641. This has been requested coming out of the Neighborhood Watch. So Clerk Rowe sent out for an estimate, and it's replacing the high-pressured sodium, I think, with LED, right?
Yeah, there's two lights.
There's two lights that while they were over there, they saw that were the old style, so they're gonna upgrade those to LED, and of course, all the new ones will be LED.
The second item's request to increase the budget for engineering services for OHM. This is for the Grove Road pathway. It's a connecting communities grant that we started with last year, and it's $17,000 to do the specs for that and to oversee the construction of it. The compost fund is the second or the third one, and this is for what's called a track stacker for the compost site. And would you...Carl, would you like to talk about the stacker now before...so the board has any questions about the pieces of equipment that you're looking at and why you're looking at it? It would be great to do it now.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Carl Rousey. I know some board members here I haven't got to meet yet, but I am the compost coordinator. I'm here this evening to request to purchase a track stacker, which is an 80-foot unit that would run off of our screen plant that we currently screen compost with. This unit would able us to move material further away from the screener, which atypically we get boxed in. We do a lot of volume at our compost site along with different materials. We do a compost, we do a blended soil, asphalt, millings, and mulch. This unit would work with our current conveyor. It would drop into a hopper. It would move the material 80 feet away from the machine, and we can have separate piles in excess of 2,200 yards per cone, if you will. And this would allow us to utilize a lot more of the property that we have, but yet we don't have a lot of property. So this is basically kinda giving us some room to move the machine out for servicing. It's not pinned in at any given time. It's a total portable unit. We don't have to tow it. We don't need any support vehicles. Hence, the track stacker, it's self-propelled with radio remote. And again, it's a very nice machine, and it's something that I'd really, really like to have out there at our site.
So you explained to me that currently, when you create a pile, this machine will actually shoot it out further so that you can stay in one place instead of turning it so many times with the front-end loader?
Exactly. Currently, the machine right now is...what we have is our McCloskey Turner, right? Or, excuse me, our McCloskey trommel. It'll do 1,400 yards with 130-degree radius. That means the stacker that's on the current machine that's built into it will only swing 130 degrees, and we can only put, in good estimation, 1,300 yards. This particular model will work in correlation with our current machine. It will drop it into a hopper and move it 80 feet away, which allows us then at that point to have different materials further away from the machine so that if we have to move the machine to a different area on the site that's not pinned in, we don't need another loader operator because that's...you're getting in a double handling of the material. We don't want to get into that. So what I'm doing, this is aiding less an employee, but yet moving the material away from the machine so that we can obviously build more of a stockpile because we tend to run out. We're always behind the eight ball because we just can't make enough for one given time. Now, we can stockpile it and work off a 2,200-yard pile.
Are there any questions on that?
So this will generate more revenue for you, right, Carl?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Absolutely. And it takes another loader operator out of the mix. One operator can handle both the screen plant and the stacker.
Excellent.
Any other questions, then?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So not only are you bringing in more revenue, you're actually saving an expense as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, we are. Currently, right now, that same operator, which has been me, I'm having to stop the machine, so we're losing production. I have to move the material around so I can start blending another soil. This year, I can just...I can do compost for a day, do blended soil for a day, and have two separate piles, like I said, in excess of 2,200 yards. So it definitely helps us out at the site immensely.
Great, thanks.
Mary, do you have any questions?
Carl has told me that I can't ask any question. No, I've talked to Carl, so...
Okay. I know you had talked about this in your improvement plan for the compost site.
Yes, I have.
Especially in like...okay.
Yeah, and definitely, this is part of the capital improvement. That was before Jeff Allen left. I had a five-year plan, and I submitted it to him, and this is one of those items.
All right. And you have the quotes from Mother?
I do. There's three quotes total.
All right. That would be the third budget amendment on...for budget amendments. So thank you for coming out. There's a picture?
Yes, there is a picture of what that unit does.
Yeah, we could probably add to the packet as well. I don't know why I can't get it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What's delivery time after...if the board approves it?
There is a dispatch date of the 26th. This machine has to be built in advance, and either way, if this didn't go through this evening, the gentleman would still be able to sell the machine within days. It'll be in...it's built in Petersburg, Ontario. It'll be shipped to the United States within days of the 26th. The dispatch date, the build date's the 26th. Within a few days, it's being immediately sent to...into Michigan. Not necessarily to us, it'll go to the yard.
So you're gonna have it early May or late April?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the...we did the...let's go over the...any questions on the minutes? Statements and checks? Treasures report? We did budget amendments? Everyone okay with everything? Is Mike...Mike's still not here.
Well, I can go if you want.
You wanna go, Eddie? Okay. So this is for the request for administrative approval to extend the one-year extension of the PD Stage One Preliminary Site Plan and Rezoning, which was granted on March 21st until December 18th, 2018. And rezoning granted on March 21st until December 18th for the Yankee Air Museum. And I know that Dennis Norton is here.
Yeah, thanks, Brenda. Yes, we...in talking with Mike and Ben over the last few months and the number of meetings we've had, it's become apparent with trying to get everything done for the Stage Two, with all the changes that have happened at Willa Run on the site, most of them, nothing we had any control over. Plus, some of the changes that may come this summer with Hangar One. I think you're probably aware of that issue, and we may have to change some of the underground because of that. So trying to get ready for the Stage Two, which I think is due this month...or in May, I guess, just making apparent to Ben and Mike that we really ought to extend it a little bit to give it a little more time to make sure everything gets done correctly and we get all of this underground that we're gonna have to change this summer, possibly because of Hangar One, get it all done correctly the first time instead of having to come back and change it later on. So Mike suggested this administrative change. I don't know quite how that works, but I assume he's talked to you about that, or...
Yes.
Okay. So that's what the request is. We've got most of it done anyway, but just because of all the stuffs going on out there, it just really compressed the time for us.
So it's really not changing anything?
No.
It's just extending the site plan?
Correct.
So I am...from reading the information, ordinance allows one extension, so in order to get another one, they're saying you have to come back to the board.
That's...that's my understanding, yeah, from talking to Mike.
Yeah. So is there any questions regarding this extension?
Just is it long enough, or does it need longer than...
Well, we'll...we'll have everything...the uncertainties right now, we'll know by the end of summer, so...
Okay.
I don't see any problem. We were 90% done with the Stage Two already, but we...there were these few things that were just hanging out that we couldn't get our arms around yet, so that's all it was, really. So I think that's plenty of time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's not, I'll retire.
Do you want us to give us an update on where you're at and how good things are going?
We put...how'd I put it? We put a million dollars in the ground during 2017. None of it you can see, but it's all...the storm water, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, the electrical, all came in underground. That's all permanent now. Most of that is either hooked up to the building or very close to the building. The water, we can't bring into the building yet because we didn't have heat this winter. We hope to have that this next winter. We did do quite a bit of work on the building itself this year. We put a new roof on part of the building. We knew we were gonna have to do that. That wasn't a surprise. We put a new roof conductor system as part of the storm water system to bring all the roof water off and into a brand-new system that was required by Racer. That was...we spent almost $400,000 on that, so we're spending money. But we made good progress. This coming year, we're struggling right now with trying to find out what's gonna happen with Hangar One. I shouldn't say struggling. We just...we don't know the answer to it yet. We may end up having to move our hangar forward by three years. We were gonna build a new hangar anyway. We may have to do that upfront if Hangar One gets closed at Willa Run, and we can't get any kind of extension. So that's an issue we're dealing with. If we can't get an extension, our airplanes are gonna have to go somewhere else for the winter, and we don't want to see that this year. So that's part of the reason for this PD Two change is we need to figure out if we need to make some changes in order to accommodate our aircraft this year. But beyond that, we made good progress. Almost everything we wanted to get done in 2017, we got done. A little bit of it was delayed, mostly, I think, by Racer and ACM just because their projects are so big, so much bigger than ours, it took them a while to get things under control, but most of that should be done this year. A big airshow, don't forget our airshow. That's August 25 and 26 this year. U.S. Air Force Thunderbirds. We had the Blue Angels last year, Thunderbirds this year. That'll bring in 67,000 to 80,000 people. What else we have going on? Big gala going on in April. Lot of events. Almost every weekend, there's an event at the museum this year, so we are really doing our job to bring people into the township now.
Yeah, and people are excited to have you.
Making good progress, and thank you guys for your help.
All right.
Been very helpful.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, they said no.
All right, thank you.
The third item is request a professional agreement with OHM for professional engineering design for the Grove Road pathway extension in the amount of $17,705. This is a connected communities grant, and we have to do the engineering portion of We started this last year. Are there any questions on it? Only thing I would like to do is to see if we can get the existing sidewalk mill or the bike path. Yeah, because it's been there for a long time, so I don't know if we can look at...
Being going up this...
Yeah, from Bridge Road East. Yeah. And especially, the apartments are newer, but not that new. It's probably, yeah, eight or nine years, probably. But the other section is pretty broken up, but maybe we can do that with the road commission. I don't...I don't know enough about...
Maybe we could just adjust this to include that, and then when they bid it, have them bid it with, you know, two separate bids, one for the old and one for the new, to separate from the connected communities. Might be the easiest thing to do. Like, just include it in the bid as a separate task, and then that task, give a separate price for that.
Yeah, I'm...
Probably be cheaper when they come in just to do it all, you know, do it all at once, because we're doing asphalt on the other part, too.
Madam Chair, I guess my question, do they mill and...would they mill and do a mill and overlay, or would they just overlay it?
Yeah.
Because I don't think...I don't think the bike paths are near as thick as roadway, so I guess that's...I don't know. Might just put a layer over the top.
It's not enough money to include that task? Right.
Well, he had a...there was...oh, no, there's...yeah.
So I don't know how to estimate. I know a lot of times when the road commission bids out, we piggyback on, you know, their contractor if they're in that area, but I don't know how to add that up.
This one might make...just thinking out loud, this one might make more sense to do it with this because it's the same size, and it'd just be getting that...the extra thing will be getting that surface ready, and then we...and whatever the amount that they're gonna pay per yard or however they measure it, we'll have to pay that extra amount to overlay the O part. Maybe we could just do a motion to include that part in the design, and that the three of us could just authorize that additional part of the design and budget amendment for that. Once we know what it is, it'd just be like maybe another task. They have so many tasks listed out, it could be another task, just say, figure out what we need, and then include that as a separate item in the bid thing. That's...that might be the easiest thing to do.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Real quick, I just want to get a point of clarification. Okay, so what we're looking to possibly additionally do is what again? Because I...
It is...there's a gap in the sidewalk?
Okay.
From the...where the apartments or condos end on Grove Road down to the school?
Okay.
To Snow Road?
Yes.
Then they were gonna do a path to the school, down to the entrance of the school as well.
That's what's included in this engineering proposal.
Yeah.
Designed for that.
So...
Lots of it.
So what we were discussing was, since they're in this area, they should look at that existing path and overlay it, or whatever they do. Mary, I'm not sure if it's...no, I'm not sure what they do.
I would, you know, agree with that because, I mean, if you're gonna go ahead and you're doing, you know, might as well say improvements to the walkway area there, then you definitely want to make sure that you're securing what is already there. So I would agree with it, but I don't...it seems as if that may not be included as a part of bid, if I understand it correct?
The professional service doesn't include that task.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's just a matter of measuring it. It's not a...
What I would suggest is that we could just make the motion as it is on the agenda and then add, ask OHM to include in the bid specs whatever is needed to fix that, whether it's overlay or milling overlay, and to ask them to ask...to have that bid as a separate...you know, when they're bidding it, bid the total project as it is now in your packet, and then the new task to a separate bid because we don't have a grant for that. And then...and then also authorize...we probably could just bring back the budget amendment because we're not supposed to...
If it's needed, because it's on an hourly basis.
Yeah, and authorize, bring back the budget amendment if needed. We could just add that to that and just take care of it all in one motion, adjustment to their contract if they need it. Because they just...they have hours in there. Those are all estimates, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So add task of...
Reviewing the old part and adding to bids what's needed from...
Bike path.
...to where the new project's gonna start. It's at the end of the...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And so they're gonna do the engineering to review the old section to either...we'll just say do an overlay, but some of it they may have to cut out and piece it in, but to get a bid for that separate, but at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, so contractors can bid on both...on the whole...bid on what's currently in the packet for the new, and then they can give us additional bid. Because I'm sure contract, it's gonna be cheaper, you know, when they bid that because they've got their equipment, everything's out there, and then just be up to OHM to add that task or add that section to the bid.
And once we get the bid, we can either say we have the funds to do the east section or we don't have the funds.
Right.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Is it all right with everyone to add that section? See, and Jimmy?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's okay with me, definitely.
I forgot to mention to the person doing the minutes, Janice. Hello, it's Brenda. Heather Rowe is not here, and Attorney Winters is not here, too. So item four is request of Mike Seren for the hydro operation for approval of sale and transfer agreement for the renewable energy credits.
Good evening. Michael with the hydro operator. This is an annual transfer. It's a no-cost transfer from the hydro's account to the township subaccount for the purpose of reducing the carbon footprint from the use of electricity used in our big buildings. So this will be our third year of doing that, and it's just an annual thing we are doing on a voluntary basis.
It looks good to reduce your carbon print.
Absolutely. Alternatively, we could sell these racks, but right now, it's the market. You never know what you're gonna get. So we are having a surplus in our account, so I may end up having to sell some this year just so they don't expire and go to waste. Someone can use them. It might bring in a little bit of money, but nothing that's gonna go home and scream about, so...
Like a penny or something, isn't it?
Yeah, it depends. I think last time we sold it, we got like 80 cents or almost 90 cents a rack, so...and you sell only 1,000 of them, it's really not a lot of money. But, you know, it's...I think it's better used here first, so...
Correct. So would this free...would this use all the surplus that we have?
No, I have...this is only half of what I have in the bank, so to speak. So basically, I wanna use these 1,500 for this transfer, and I probably have about 1,700 more that I need to liquidate or sell this year, and then all of 2018 that I'm gonna be generating now and for this calendar year will be used to for the 2018 year when we go back. So I have a whole bunch here that I just wanna, so to speak, potentially sell later on this year.
Or the community center's not on here, is it?
It should be. I made it in my calculations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or something. So you used about everything that you could?
Yeah, unless you want to get into shelters, which probably only use, I mean, one or two racks, so, I mean, it's completely...we can add up every single one, and we can keep building on it every year if you want. I have no problem in doing that. There's a lot of legwork up front because you gotta get a DTE and get count numbers and histories, and getting it set up is a little bit of work, but it's...it can be done, so...
So does a hydro station have a lot of electricity?
We...well, when the generators are running, we use our own, so we don't have that, so that's great.
But you have lights and...
Yeah, so all that is...not even calculated here because it's just standard for the hydro.
Okay.
Yeah. The golf courses, irrigation pumps are part of it, the maintenance building, the golf course pro shop, the community center, compost site, the gatehouse, and the shop building, authority departments, all three stations, both police stations, maintenance facilities. Ford Lake Park House and Garage are now part of it. That was added this year, so we can have to start blending out and see what else we got. We might have some lift stations we could look into.
What about Yucca?
You know, I asked them once before, and I don't think they are doing something like this at this point. I think they're just more of an energy conservation versus just doing carbon footprint, so...
Right, okay.
Could include the boathouse?
I did not. And that one there, and I think, is the electric bill paid by the township or EMU?
EMU.
And there's the hangup because the count has to be in our name.
Okay.
Yeah.
The count is probably...is it in our name?
I don't think so.
I haven't seen it on any of the...on the bills or on the...
Giovanna, we don't pay the boathouse electric bill, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, Lakeside Park, we could probably add. Loon Feather, if there's stuff like that, we could add these parks on. They don't use much for electricity, so...but we can do it. So part of this is I'm working on getting little stickers we can put in the windows of the doors and renewable energy use, lowering our carbon footprint, and I'm coming up with something to kind of spread the word, so...
Could use all the lights that we pay for in the township, which is pretty large.
You know...
$70,000.
Yeah. Again, I guess we gotta figure out how we have that account number. If it's a flat fee that we pay, great to have that account number. That's an idea, though.
Yeah, Brian knows exactly how we...which ones we pay, which ones we don't.
Yeah.
And how...
Well, that's something we can look for next year into part of this year's report that we'll do next year.
Next item is request away the financial policy and accept the low quote from Maverick Equipment. This is what Carl Rousey gave a presentation on. The next item is request to authorize the agreement with Wasatch County Road Commission to install traffic calming devices on Jerome at an estimated cost of $29,000. I do...they're gonna start using cement instead of asphalt, was my understanding, because...
It'll last.
Well, and they had the issues on Parkwood where they just...they don't...they disintegrate it almost, so they said that they quit using asphalt, which is good. I don't know why we always have to be the guinea pig. I mean, but anyways, they said they were gonna start using that. So what's gonna be interesting on Jerome Avenue is because when they close Harris Road, which is between Holmes Road and Michigan Avenue, all of the...all of those streets are gonna be used to get to Michigan Avenue. Jerome, Lemay, Allen, is Allen one?
It's Allen.
So there's gonna...that meeting's tomorrow night, I think. No roundabout, though. Thanks to Ms. Kite. Number seven is request approval of 2018 Ipsley Township Agreement with Wasatch County Road Commission for the Nancy Park Drainage Improvement. I did not know this was in Nancy Park. This is Molly. This is Molly and Shirley, where the flooding is, had several years of issues with it. The road commission went in and determined that a section of it had collapsed between two houses, and, um, I don't wanna argue with them on who pays for it because it'll never get done, that's why we just said we'll go in half on the agreement with the road commission in order to get the preliminary engineering. It, it's gonna be a big issue, 'cause they're gonna reroute it and turn it over to the Drain Commission, which is a good thing for the residents and for the township, because the Drain Commission is very responsive to flooding issues or concerns, so. Any questions on that? I don't know if you guys have heard of it, the issue that's been going on?
It's been terrible.
Oh, my God, the photos are awful. So, this is just preliminary engineering to see about rerouting it, so that'll, it'll go to the Drain Commission, and it's supposed to happen this year, which is good.
Madam Chair, just a quick question, um, just, now, why did the road commission said that they wouldn't pay the entire cost, is because of?
'Cause it's a secondary road, and they're saying that they only do maintenance on primary roads and that communities pay for secondary, which is subdivision roads.
Okay.
Did I say that correct, Karen and Larry?
Okay. Okay.
It's not our storm drain, it's not our system, it's, but if we, if we don't do something, it won't get done, I mean, that's-
So, once, um, basically, the sheer cost is there, the Drain Commission will take over, I guess, the maintenance of the drain, it does not come back to the township at that point, or no?
No, the, the Wasatch County Water Resource Commission.
Okay.
They will take over, so if we have issues, then they will actually go out, and they actually do the maintenance of them, and will do the improvement, and then through a special assessment, you know, they'll have a hearing of determination if there's a big issue, and then we can use our existing maintenance drain funds if we have to.
Okay.
But, it's, I, I think it's horrible that the road commission will not take responsibility, but-
So, there was an issue with, it was never completely constructed all the way through, so I don't know if that happened in the development?
What, um, what happened, yeah, I think it was probably in a phase development.
It was never created?
They didn't, well, they, they had it between two houses, so there was, now, I know enough to be dangerous, but the drain was going down the road, and then it shot out between those two houses to drop down and take into the other storm drains. The area between those two houses collapsed, so, therefore, it's, because it wasn't flowing out down to the drain, it was backing up in the road, and-
It wasn't even an easement?
No, but they accepted it, the road commission accepted it, so, you know, it's, it's definitely, you know, it's not the townships, it's not the water resource, it is a road commission, but if we don't do this, you know, they're not gonna do anything about it, we, we gotta fix it, it's awful.
It's been like that for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, three years that I know of, that it's been really bad.
Yeah.
And the road commission and Drain Commission were kinda pointing their fingers at each other, but the Drain Commission actually went out and cleaned it out for us twice.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't theirs, and, um, the road commission finally said it was theirs, and the issue was the drain, the, the, the line that goes between two houses, which they have no easement over.
Madam Chair, I definitely understand that something needs to be done, and, um, I would be in agreement with that, but it is disappointing, um, since it looks like this would be a normal aspect, so, um, a road commission issue, but, um, it's disappointing that, um, what needs to be done in order to fix the situation has not already been done, so, I'm glad that the township is stepping up in order to make sure the residents aren't disturbed by this issue anymore, so, thank you.
Yeah. All right, um, the next item is request approval of the agreement with Wasatch County for service, um, in relation to the reimagined Wasatch for twenty-eighteen in the amount of five thousand dollars, which is budgeted. This is a shared cost between multiple municipalities and the county for a position to continue to work on the reimagined Wasatch vision, and the sidewalks installation and-
Crossing.
Crossings, and, and there's, so, we did budget for it, and it's another year of continuing to do that. Nate, is it Nathan, the Nathan Boat, Bot, Bot, is the person that works on reimagined Any questions on that? The next item is request for authorization of purchase agreement with DTE for the installation of the fiberglass posts, colonials, and convert two existing hundred watt high-pressure colonials into LED, which is located in the Nancy Park, in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. My only question was, is this in a district?
No, this is actually in township property, all these, these lights are, so, they're not in SAD.
So, the operational, well-
Probably not.
So, three years is forty-five hundred, so we'll just have to budget for that. Well, it's fifteen twenty-four, okay, so fifteen hundred dollars, we'd have to budget for that. Questions or comments? This is, um, the next item is request of final approval of the communication site lease agreement for cell tower located at two-eight-zero-one Holmes Road in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, this-
We approved this in the past, this is like the final phase.
We, we authorized negotiations.
We authorized, yeah, passed it last year, made Doug to work with them to try to see, do what he'd done with the other cell towers.
I can't speak to the legality of it, but basically, it's, this is the last cell tower, right, that we have on our property that they're paying us out for? Is there one more?
I thought there was one in Holmes or something, Doug said we wouldn't get as much money, or is this this one? This isn't this one?
This is Holmes.
This is it, okay, this is it then?
Right, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
You're right, this is Holmes, this, is this the last one, Joe?
Yeah, and this is the last one, so you don't get paid, month, a yearly, you get a lump sum. Next item is request for an educational mailing to residents in regard to the fire millage election being held on May eighth, and we, we have, we did get three quotes on that, and Messenger, um, was the lowest quote with one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents, that does not include postage, none of the, um, one of them included postage. But he was so much cheaper than the other one.
And that would be my question, Madam Chair, if I, if I can, um, hopefully in the future, um, when there's quotes like this, that they can actually include the posters, um, because even though he has the lowest costs, basically, for the design and might as well say the production, there was nothing in regards to posters, so I had to actually obtain that information today, um, and that's, it's twenty-seven, uh, two thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cent, um, and-
Did you get that from Messenger?
Nope, actually, I got it from Tammy.
Oh, so, so Messenger did give him the postage cost?
I'm assuming that it wasn't, it wasn't included in his original bid, that's for sure, yeah, I ended up getting that from Tammy, yeah. In fact, yeah, like you said, Madam Chair, only one that did include their postage cost was UPS.
And they were much higher.
Yeah, they was much higher, that's for sure.
Right, four thousand.
But I guess my question maybe is, also, it looks like, maybe I'm wrong, but they have varying postage costs, um, like some of them do, like this one, the second one, Allegra is zero point one five nine, uh, what was the other people, you really kinda, yeah, yeah, a UPS store was zero, uh, zero, um, point two-three-three, I guess, my question is, is there a different price for the posters normally, or is it just one price?
Yeah, it's how they, um, I know Messenger, he, I don't know that he's ever not been the lowest postage, and what, what, 'cause what he does, he sorts by actual carrier route, so, and that's another reason why normally, I mean, hopefully, we're gonna try to track it, um, with the Pope when it goes out, um, that's why it goes so faster, even though you pay bulk, and you pay even a lower bulk, because the way he's, what he does is he does the post office work, and actually, when it gets, when it goes to the post office, he already has it for the post office to go down wherever it is, you, your route is already separated, stays mine, everybody's separated, so therefore, he gets a lower cost, that's available to everybody, I don't know if other folks just don't have the staff, they don't do that, but that's why his postage cost is always the lowest, 'cause he sorts by carrier route, so it's actually broke down, which is normally goes to Detroit, and they do that, they sort that there, but he already has it sorted, and that's another, that's why traditionally, his stuff goes the same as first class, even though you pay a bulk, because he sorted it out, so.
Oh, okay.
Times used to be different, when he got to the post office, people would get it the next day, within two days, now, whether that'll be the case with everything else that's going on, but we have a better chance of being faster because of the way that he sorts, and that's why it's cheaper.
I guess, um, Madam Chair, the only, I guess, sorry, the only, I guess, um, advice that I will give for the future is that I do believe in order to make sure the bid is fair to all people or all entities that bid, that all entities need to include their postage costs inside of their bid.
Do you have one question, if I could?
Yeah.
You mentioned there were three bids, but I'm looking at a fourth one on the back from standard printing, do we know if that includes their postage? 'Cause I'm looking at the bottom, and it says mailing with sort stuff.
That's what it costs to sort it, that's not the postage.
Okay, it's not postage, then theirs will be higher, okay.
Yeah, and I asked the same question, 'cause it was closer, and it was, UPS was just way higher, and then, um, so the, the mailing for Messenger was still low then? Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if it's, if I can, um, it came out with the postage cost that I got to is four thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents, so.
The total.
The total, yes. And since the one on the fourth page did not, um, honestly detail if that two thousand three hundred and eight, what's that, eighty-nine dollars, I think?
That's just-
Ninety-nine, yeah, they didn't detail if that include posters or not, since you can't tell, it looks like you have to go with no, so if that's the case, then yeah, they would be the lowest bidder.
Yeah, that didn't include postage, that's for the sorting that Karen was talking about?
Right.
The only thing, I'm very concerned with the, um, the mail, um, that, so, I was thinking, 'cause usually he mails from Taylor, but I know if we take it directly to the post office here-
He takes it directly to Detroit.
He directly takes it to the sort facility.
He takes it to Detroit, he's in Taylor, but he actually takes it to Detroit to mail, that's why I think he gets the, and he has it sorted.
But if he mails it from there, does it go there and come back?
He goes there, and then it comes here, but he takes it directly there, cuts out a couple of days, and it's already sorted.
Because if you take it here, it's gonna go to Detroit, and then it's gonna come back.
No, I learned, but I don't know if it's accurate information 'cause of the post office, but, that if we take it here, and it's all local here, that it doesn't go to Detroit, but you have to take it to a certain person in the back of the mail person, and as long as it's only Ipsy, they will take it? No, in first class, it's first class, yeah, but, so if you guys are confident.
He is a union shop as well, just a side note there.
Okay, yeah, normally, we wouldn't do this, we would have, but it was such a, trying to get people to bid, too.
It's really hard.
It was, it was hard, and, I mean, we had to hound them to get it, Tammy was pretty good, uh, so, I think she sent it out, what she sent out to them was the same, it just looks like what was responded to was it.
Um, Madam Chair, if I can, yeah, that's what it looked like, it looked like maybe they put what they thought, um, they needed to put, and just kinda went from there, um, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, normally, too, there would be a memo that broke it all down for everyone, but we did get the final two, another two, we got two quotes today, that's, but we, we wanted to make sure that we got enough quotes to see if it's possible, but I agree with The next item on the agenda is authorization bids, um, Michael Seren for hydro operations to award, award the low quote for professional services to James Luffel, for labor to remove the replace turbine, a hundred and forty-six thousand.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael with Hydro Operator, um, so, last meeting, uh, the board approved the parts component of Martha Project, um, that has been submitted and is being built now, we expect those parts to arrive, uh, mid to late June, in time for a July project. What's in the board packets tonight is the labor portion of the project, which would remove the existing bearing and shaft and put in the new one. So, when we had, we had five companies that I contacted, our longtime mechanical contractor, uh, Patnose Lidle out of Grand Rapids, Michigan, uh, did not submit a proposal due to, uh, labor shortage, so, um, we did get three back, James Luffel Company is the original turbine manufacturer from, uh, from the, when the hydro was built, and the other two companies, I didn't know a lot about them, but got a chance to meet them, they actually came and visited the hydro and spent some time, so those two other companies, Myron and HCMS, um, are good companies as well, they seem to be doing it, uh, quite a while. So, during the review process of the proposals, it came down to a low bid, which is Myron and James Luffel Company, and it was a very tough decision because of the low bid having chances of coming in with extras, and it's, it would be a gamble, if we went with low bid, it would be a real good chance they would have to come in for extras and be right back into the middle where James Luffel Company came in, so I thought for cleanliness and more sound of a proposal, James Luffel Company would be the better choice, so, um, but I am open for discussion, questions regarding those proposals.
Questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You said this is the original, uh, manufacturer of the-
Yes, not the original owner, but the original manufacturer, he has all the prints on hand, and now he can walk over to his shop and say, pull this out and build this, so there is some tweaking because of, um, materials and, uh, little bit of design changes, but the base plate that's really critical would match the existing ones there now, so, without re-engineering it, that would probably even cost more.
Right.
First, you're willing?
Um, okay, hi, um, thank you, Madam Chair, if I can, okay, so, basically, if I have it correct, uh, make sure I have it company, uh, James Luffel and Company-
Mm-hmm.
-that, yeah, it came in, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars more, but, um, you're saying with this company, you don't anticipate them having to come back and ask for-
Additional time for removal of existing components, final alignment, are the big ones that, uh, I think Myron would probably need, I, I'm only speculating based on the three proposals we got, and the timeframes that were in the other two, they were, uh, Myron was fourteen workdays, Luffels was like twenty-five workdays, and HCMS was, I'm sorry, Luffels was thirty days, and HCMS was around twenty-five days, so, I, I'm, my gut feeling is with the other two, the, uh, James Luffel and HCMS, it's gonna take at least twenty-five working days, is my gut feeling, fourteen days, if they could do it in fourteen days, that would be great, but I'm skeptical.
Okay.
You know, and, and again, it's just my recommendation- You know, and, and again, it's just my recommendation, I'm happy to discuss and however the board wants to move forward. I would work with any of the three companies.
Right, okay. But based on your experience?
Yeah, my gut is gonna take more than fourteen days.
Okay, so it'll take more than fourteen days.
And they're from Minnesota?
Uh, uh, James Luffels is Oha Springfield, Ohio.
No, Wisconsin, that's where the other companies-
Wisconsin, the others are, was from Wisconsin, correct. So, they all would have to.
Okay. So if they stay, have to stay longer, does that mean you have to put them up in the hotel and all that?
Right, yes. So, anyway, either way, we're gonna be paying lodging for actual costs.
So the quote includes a lodging?
Yes. So whatever the base price was for, uh, Luffels, it's, it was based on thirty workdays for lodging. And I believe it was, uh, five, five standby days would be the Sunday that they're still here, and we're gonna still have to pay for their lodging for that Sunday. And then they would report back to work on Monday. Yeah.
Hmm, your moat toe.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a real quick question. If, okay, I know you said that there are, uh, James Luffel and Company.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're basing that off of twenty-five days, right? If it did take fourteen days, which it, it probably will not, but I'm just saying, if it did take fourteen days, um, would they bring that one hundred and forty-six thousand base price down, because they would not have to stay as long?
The lodging probably, probably would go down, but I'm thinking their base price for the labor would not.
Ah.
See, that, that was the other part of the component that you, you're gambling on. You could go with low bid with the potential of coming back, getting more, or you go with the solid one, then you'd have a, a non-interrupted project. My fear is, we get into the fourteenth day and they're not done yet, and they're gonna have to stop work because the purchase order's maxed out.
Mm-hmm.
So then I'm coming back to you guys for a change order, which we might be sitting for a week, two weeks, unless we have a pre-approved change order that the board would like put in place. That was the hang-up timeframe. You know, we, we might be a dry summer, we may not need it, might not be a big deal, or we could have a wet one where we could be losing a lot of money. It's a gamble. Either way, there's a risk.
And without a change order, would they still be staying at the hotel?
On standby, and we'd be still paying for it.
Really?
Unless I tell them to pack up and go home, which then I'm paying for mobilization to bring them back.
And then come back. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other question? I think that the, the Luffel and Company is the same company that the actual item that we purchased.
They, and that was the other benefit.
Right.
Luffel Company is making the bearing now. And if that bearing showed up on site and there was something wrong with their design, or they're, they're already there to deal with it. And I could stop the clock and say, you can fix it before we move forward on our part two contract or the labor contract.
Okay.
So, that was another side that I did like about that. But, again, it was a hard decision, going low bid to mid bid, and it was twenty-eight thousand dollar change. So it was a tough one for me.
But if the other company was here and there was a problem with their design, then you'd have to bring Luffel back in.
And yes, and-
Cause they're not gonna deal with someone else's work, right?
Right, so that, that would be on the township in Luffel to figure out the solution, and meanwhile, the other company could be on standby and we're paying for their lodging, you know. Um, so again, there's, there's pros and cons to go on low bid to mid bid, mid-range with James Luffel, so.
Okay, so we're gonna strike the word low quote from the authorization in bids and just accept the quote.
Right.
The only time you'll have additional dollars for the Luffel Company is if they have to move the generator?
Right, so that is when the top of the generator, well, I don't know if you guys know the layout of the hydro, but there's forty foot of drive shaft, so to speak, from the turbine to the top of the generator. If the, uh, if the, since the powerhouse is kinda settled over the years, it may need to come back and push back towards the lake or to the west. If they have to do that, that could add a week worth of work, because they have to move all that.
And that's true of every person that bid.
Exactly.
Or every company that bid.
Every company that, so that part really isn't a concern, it was an even across the board, that's an understanding. So, and I, I agree with that. I, I gut feeling says I think they can just, uh, do minor alignment with shims and get what we need. Cause if we did have a true alignment problem, I'd be having oil issues and we would have indicators, and I don't see that right now.
All right, well, we have learned a lot about hydro. Is there any questions, any other?
No, Madam Chair, I, I know Mike and I talked for a long time on this, and, um, I kinda take his expertise and, uh, would wholly support the, um, the middle bid, the hundred and forty-six thousand dollar bid. I think with them being the company that's building the bearing and everything and, and putting it together, I think they, they had a smaller crew, but was gonna be here longer. Um, it's, makes more sense, too, I think. So, I, I totally support Mike's decision.
All right, thank you. Well, that's it.
Mike, um, just for my little brain, um, why didn't we build all, build it all together, the shaft or the bearing thing? Like, cause you knew you had to do all this, right or not?
I did, and I knew I wanted this particular bearing. And for them, if I could say, okay, company B and C, go to Luffels and get the price, and we would be paying even more, cause they would have check on their markup.
Luffel might have gave you a better deal if they were all together. I, just-
Well, I think Luffels is gonna get whatever they're gonna get, so, yeah.
All right, whatever, just good, thank you.
Yeah.
Right. That concludes the work session.
Thank you.
At five fifty-seven, Janice.